All right, we are on.
Stay standing.
We'd like to call the Meeker County Board of Commissioners regular session Tuesday, July 15, 2025, to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just one quick note. Commissioner Schmidt is not with today. He is in Philadelphia working with our national group on issues that affect all of the counties throughout the United States. So, we thank him for his time that he takes away to go and do all of this. All right, public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment? Hearing none, we will move on. Board agenda.
No changes today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there are no changes. Is there any, any motion to accept the agenda as printed?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Oberge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Orde. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. We have an introduction today, so if, we could have you step forward.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. I'm Heather. Really excited to be here. I come with over 20 years of experience in counties. I worked at Wright and Sherburne County. Were 15 years at Sherburne, six at Wright, and so I'm really excited for the opportunity to meet all of you.
We're glad to have you.
So, I don't know if the public knows, but Heather's gonna be our new finance director. Because Sharon is leaving us after, how many years, Sharon?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, wow, that's so cool.
You do realize you're still gonna get up at the same time every morning and...
Do the same stuff.
Well, Heather, we look forward to having you as our finance director. We're not a real complicated county. We're pretty straightforward.
As people, I think we might be, but...
As what?
As people we're kind of.
But, you know, I think you're gonna like it here. We hope you'll like it here. We hope you're here for 37 years.
Yes, that would be nice. All day on the Wright County.
Like that.
I like your sense of humor.
Thank you and welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
County administrator, consent agenda, would you please run it for us?
Yes, today we just have a couple of items, approval of the July 1 board meeting minutes, and approval of the health and human services, county and hospital accounts payable.
Well, that might be the shortest consent agenda we've had.
It can't get shorter.
All right, any questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve?
Yes, some move.
Motion by Commissioner Van Orde, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Greg Schultz, Land Use Director.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. Simone has got one item for you for the consideration. That is a new contract for operation of landfill transfer station. Site located at 63701, 203rd Street, Litchfield, Minnesota, parcel 090315001. If you can remember back in February of this year, we had a work session to discuss the possible future of the landfill and its, its operations. And from that work session, we discussed, we discussed a couple different options. One is to request a new RFP to operate the site. The second option was that the county takes over the site with county personnel. Third option was to sell the landfill. And the fourth option was to kind of stay the course at the site with the current operator in place. After that work session, the thought was to, that we're probably gonna pursue, has the county taken over the site with county personnel, as you know, the finance part of it, the budget part of it, wouldn't necessarily pose any savings in the county to operate it with county personnel. With the equipment costs and everything else, it'd be kind of a wash either way. And still, we were kind of pushing in that direction. In the middle of April, April 14th, we got notified by a vendor, a different operator of a possible contract, they would be willing to run the site at, which would have been a significant saving for what our current contract was with endurance. So with that, we, we also had, and next couple of weeks later in May, we also had a similar proposal from another vendor related to cost savings to operate the site as well. And with that, we sent our RFPs in June for new operator at the site due to information. Those RFPs are sent out on June 6th. Sent out seven, there were seven interested parties. We sent out RFPs to, we gave them a month to get back to us by the end of June. We had three proposals that were submitted at the end of June for those RFPs that were sent out in early June. Those three companies were Innovative Resource Recovery, MWS Logistics, and Stockman Trucking. Those are the three that actually pulled the trigger and sent in a new contract. With that, those three bids, there would have been some savings with one, but one bid was very unique, the fact that they were, they were kind of disappointed that they, they didn't necessarily realize the contract or the site had been for sale in the past. So, they expressed interest in their new contract that they would like to buy the site. And they were pretty serious about it. I've had a few conversations with them, but they're still very interested in purchasing the site. So with that, I took that information, gave it to Andrew and the Commissioners Johnson and Schmidt. We looked at those contracts. And then from that, I think it was determined that we need to take seriously the possibility that they possibly will want to purchase that site in the future. So with that, the, the management decided that we wouldn't accept any of the proposals that were submitted at this time, and we're probably gonna explore and send out RFPs sometime in, in August for the purchase of a site, as we did a couple of years ago. So, that's where we stand right now. So, any questions?
It was a unique, the proposals were unique. The, one company was from Maine, the other Maryland, was it? And then the one that currently operates...
No, it kind of threw it.
Yeah.
That's the one from Maryland.
Oh, it is, okay. We looked at the possibility of, if we continue to operate on our own, are we gonna have to cap it? And what would that cost be if...
It's gonna be anywhere from a million and a half to three and a half million dollars.
Yeah, that we could face. And if you recall, that was, was it a year ago when we attempted to sell?
Yeah, two years ago.
Two years? So, we attempted to sell the, the site at that time, but, you know, obviously word didn't reach to everybody, every potential buyer. Or maybe they weren't in the market at that time, but it, it's something I think we need to consider. Yes, the landfill is a tremendous service for our county residents. And so, there are some risks. If we sell it, could they close it? Could they raise the prices? All of that. But, those are things that we'll have to weigh out down the road.
And we would lose total control of all of those things.
Yes. But our hope is, is that, you know, it'll be more than our hope. We'll, we'll try to negotiate that part should we come to that point, that we have a clean, efficient operation that serves our public well. So that is why, as a group, we move, we recommend to you, as Commissioners, the rest of the Commissioners, to reject the proposals received for the operation of the landfill and, and transfer station, and that we look to issue a new RFP in the near future. Questions?
Does this company have a history? And have we looked into them in terms of other places they've taken over, or...
They, they do have a history. And we, I suppose we should be a little careful here because we may have other bidders. And so, we're not looking to favor one bidder over the other. But, when we did look at, I think we looked up all three companies.
Yeah, so ultimately, the, kind of where we're at right now is, two years ago, when we made the attempt to sell the site on a couple of different occasions, there, while there had been some interest that had been demonstrated, which is why we went through the process, that interest did not materialize into any actual proposals. Based on Greg's conversations, we're, we're at a point where we believe that there is sufficient interest to garner at least one proposal, but we need to go through a process of soliciting that publicly, open it up for, for everyone to be able to bid on it. If we get to that point that we do get a proposal, or we get multiple proposals, we would then vet those purchasers to come to you with a recommendation.
How long is that process?
Last time we had about a month.
Okay.
From the RFP when we sent it out. So, we'll have to determine when that'll be. We'll give them some time to get the ducks around and look at us as well.
Like last time, nobody bid on it, did they?
Correct.
So, that's why it was, I mean, maybe it'd been longer if we would have...
If that whole process were to come, you know, full circle, and there was not a, a decision to, to sell, then do we need to do the RFP again for site management?
Yes, we would.
Then we would have to do that again, okay.
So, we're really not closing any doors?
We're opening an additional door.
We're just making sure we've opened every door to take a look at what's inside.
Okay.
I, I think the timeframe that we would look to go and issue the RFP for the sale is probably mid-August, and then it'd be open for about a month, and then we would come back. So, mid-September, we're probably at that point where we're having another discussion about this. We will need to have a conversation to set a price, so we'll be doing that before we issue it.
I'm curious, what, if you know, what do they have to go through when they close a site? I'm assuming...
Yes, go through the state. The MPCA will determine what it takes to close it, like what type of, if it needs a liner, doesn't need a liner, capping, they will determine all that at that point, once it gets to that point.
So that could be a lot of dollars, I'm assuming?
Yes, that'll be, Kandy Ojai County is going through that right now. It's about $275,000 an acre with a liner, but they're required to have a liner over the top of it. We have about 13 acres out there.
They're closing their site?
Their demo site.
Yes, I didn't know that.
Total acreage of our site is what again?
About 13, 14 acres, 13 to 14 acres of the demolition prop, or site part, that would need to be capped. Our total property out there is about 43 acres.
About how much?
Forty-three is.
Forty-three acres for the total property, but actually the demo part, it would need to be capped, is 13 to 14 acres.
So if Kandy Ojai, sorry, is, Kandy Ojai closes their demo, is that gonna affect us with...
I don't know.
Well, I would assume it would.
You almost gotta assume that it's gonna...
You gotta assume it's gonna affect us.
We have...
If you remember, our permit runs out in 2029.
Yeah.
So, that was kind of, from the MPCA, we have to be closed by then, and we have to have it somewhat capped before then as well. They're gonna, in 2025, they're supposed to get their rules out on the timelines this year, but they're not out at this time. So...
Are we anticipating that we're not gonna renew that demo site in 2029?
That's really not an option financially. If we wanna get a new permit, we have to put a leachate system, and we'd have to line underneath it as well as everything else. That's financially gonna be millions of dollars. So...
So is that why Kandy is closing?
Correct. It's part of it.
So I think what's before us today is the approval to reject proposals. And I would look for a motion for that if, if we're all in agreement, if there's no more questions. We can discuss the motion once there's a motion on the table.
Nobody wants to make that motion today. Let's just, I can't find it, or I would.
Mr. Chair, I move to reject the proposals received for operation of the landfill and transfer station.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Samke. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Oberge. Now, is there a discussion about the motion?
I had a question, but trying to find the question, I've forgotten my question, if that makes sense. So, so I understand this, so we're gonna redo the RFPs, we send them out again the same way? And then, are you saying that in whatever year, it'll probably be closed, no matter what, or...
2029.
So the new company...
That's the end of our, that's the end of our timeline.
Well, how about if somebody buys it, though? They're not gonna, are they gonna buy it? I mean, is that why they didn't want to bid on it?
Probably. But that's just a demolition site. Transfer station, that'll be a new permit, that'll be a new permit. So it's the demolition site, the actual storage of the demolition products on the site. And there's other options for people as well. They can open up a site, and they can do recycling at the site, where they can separate things out and outsource it to other locations, the demolition. But that would take kind of a facility upgrade up there for that as well. So...
And just remember, with this motion, if it passes, we're not closing any doors. We could turn right around in a couple of months, and we don't like the proposals to sell, reissue the proposal to operate. So, we haven't closed any doors.
So, if Kandy closes, who's the closest one besides us?
It would be Howick.
What is it? Howick? My concern is just, when all of these close, are we gonna find stuff in the ditches and all over?
Well, we do know.
So, that, that is a bigger issue.
Yeah.
And, but, but that's an issue that's being driven by the MPCA, not our decision-making process. And again, the transfer station remains open, so...
Right.
People who are disposing of this mixed solid waste or recycling would have that opportunity to do that at that site still. It's the demolition, demolition debris that would be an issue. Small projects, certainly you could find that stuff, but bigger projects, whole homes being torn down and replaced, commercial projects, those sorts of vendors are still gonna go to the nearest diamond land, so...
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Phil Smalls, Public Works Director.
Good morning. Again, Phil Smalls, Public Works Director. One item for consideration this morning, and then something fun.
Wow.
I just thought, you don't seem, you don't seem like the fun type to me. I'm kidding, you're fun.
So the action item for consideration is to approve the reclassification of the ditch inspector position. So as you saw in your packet, the comp and class committee met on June 10th to consider the reclassification request. The request was made due to some adjustments made in the job description and some comparisons of regional wages for comparable positions. At this time, the ditch inspector remains a vacant position. That's why I'm here now versus waiting for 2026 to make an adjustment. The comp and class committee did approve the recor, did approved reclassification of the ditch inspector from an HB 24 to an HC 41. So that is the approval I'm looking for today. One thing about ditch inspector that has no impact on the levy, the ditch inspector hours are paid for by benefiting properties on the ditch systems. So, cost to those benefiting properties could potentially go up slightly as a result of this.
As a reminder, we are statutorily required to inspect ditches every five years?
Five years.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we have a need for either this position or contracted position to be compliant with. And I had an issue in, in one of my townships. So we've got our Public Works Director, who's in charge of all of our roads and many, many other things, looking into it. We need, we need to fill this position, and if this helps, we need to get it done.
I have a list, and the list gets longer every week with ditch items. Try to put out the hot fires, but there's a lot that we're falling behind on.
Yeah.
Do you feel like this is a solution to finding someone?
I'm hopeful. I mean, I, I can't predict what will happen, but I hope that expose, or gives us an opportunity to see some candidates that maybe have been reluctant to apply to this point.
And refresh my memory, did you have one, one application or none?
We had one applicant, they were out of state, really no relevance to the position. That was a while back.
And if you recall, we had a discussion, where soil and water, but they have no interest in...
That got shot down quite, pretty rapidly, I think.
It looked good, and then it kind of disappeared. And I did reach out to Wright County, talk about contracting. I didn't get a response.
Oh, you didn't?
So I didn't poke them again.
Are there qualifications, certifications, how does that all work?
So the job description, we're looking for someone with, I guess in layman's terms, I want someone with understanding of drainage and focus on environmental resources. We do ask for a two-year certificate in environmental resources or something of that nature, but I'll tell you, if we get an applicant with some relevant interests and experience, we're gonna talk to them. Mainly, understanding drainage, that's number one.
I think we all know that the laws, rules, and regulations and statutes are extremely complicated.
Yeah.
If you've been to any ditch instruction, or any ditch training.
Right, Cheryl?
Yes, absolutely. So you mentioned that you had reached out to Wright County. Have you reached out to McLeod or Kandy Ojai?
I haven't. So McLeod would be a little more complicated, being they work through their soil and water. They don't have a ditch inspector...
Okay.
On, on McLeod County staff.
Okay.
But I kind of left it there. We've worked with Kandy Ojai and Renville in the past, and I don't think they have interest in sharing their capacity with us, but we didn't have those specific conversations.
Renville's very active on their ditches, and I think their ditch inspector is busy.
They've got a, a larger department, similar to Kandy Ojai, where they have a, I think they call it a drainage manager in both counties, and then they have drainage technicians that work under that drainage manager and complete everything we're looking to do with this ditch inspector position.
Just out of curiosity, their technicians, what's, do you happen to know their rate of pay? I mean, is this job now gonna be above, so maybe a technician could be of interest?
I think we'll be close to what their technicians are, if I remember. I think they might have that in here.
I don't like to rob Peter to pay us.
But you have to do it.
If that's...
Don't feel that bad.
If it's an advancement for them in their career, then...
You're always trying to give money away, Paul. Always.
Strike that front.
I would say this would put a slightly above, I'm estimating because I have some old data for Renville County specifically, slightly above their technician, still quite a bit behind their drainage manager, but slightly above their drainage technicians for weight.
And I'm not sure that the ditch inspectors that quit were because of pay, maybe. One had a future elsewhere, I think. When I became a Commissioner for a little history, we didn't have a ditch inspector. And I knew, right, Brandon, I knew zero about ditches, obviously. But because of that, we fell behind in a lot of areas, and now I worry that we're gonna be falling behind, and, and, you know. So, we have to do something. I don't, I don't know why they don't stay. I mean, I don't know what the average is for any county to keep a ditch inspector. I don't, do you?
I mean, I have a couple of picks. I have Renville County and Kandy Ojai County information. But what I'll say about the ditch inspection situation, our ditches, we've made good progress, my opinion, since we started with the ditch inspector, and that's why I have a list. I think the public's aware that we're trying to make improvements on our systems, doing the cleanings, doing the vegetation control, so that makes them reach out with their needs instead of, historically, when we maybe didn't do as much.
And I think I, there was some pushback when we hired a ditch inspector from the people that are paying and right on. However, you don't hear that anymore because things have improved, but I'm worried that, like I said, we'll get behind if we don't do what we need to to fill it now, so...
Would it be fair to say we've benefited a little bit with our judicial ditches because between Renville and Kandy Ojai, their inspectors had to pick up for us a little bit?
Yep. Where we have ditches that cross boundaries, we have leaned on that some. They can come into our colony and take care of something on our shared system.
So you don't have an add-on right now, or you do?
We do.
Okay.
We do.
So I'll move to approve reclassification of the ditch inspector to the HC 41 scale.
Commissioner Oberge has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any discussion?
Is this, is this basically kind of like almost a civil engineer kind of position, or no?
I would say no. More looking for someone with, like I said, environmental background, drainage understanding. I wouldn't call it civil engineering. We're not gonna get into roads. You know, someone with a civil engineering background would certainly be qualified, but I don't expect that.
And we utilize engineering firms when we need them, like Houston and, or so. We rely on those folks for...
Anytime we appoint an engineer for a proceeding, whether it's a repair, we don't do a lot of improvements, but something where we need a little more expertise, we'll appoint a consultant. We don't rely on internal. Like me, I'm highway-based. I could do it, I wouldn't feel comfortable as far as the way my license is set up, being responsible professionally for drainage.
So when you get a complaint or an inquiry, now do you go out yourself and handle it? You do?
Most of them, and I get some help. My superintendent's been out. We've had crew members checking stuff out, technicians. It's kind of a team effort. Put out, except the hot fires, we put them out, deal with them if we can. If it's something quick, if it's something that's gonna take more time and research, those are kind of the things that are sitting, waiting.
I know there has been some interest from a, a, a party who would contract the labor. If this doesn't help fill this position, is that still on the table? Okay.
I think that's an option, but as we discussed prior, we would have to put out an RFP.
Yes.
Rather than just selecting someone.
Yes.
And I don't know if that'd be a long-term solution, but it's something we could try if...
To keep up if we had to, yeah.
If we're back here in a few months in the same situation.
That would be my concern, too, that we're getting too far behind if we don't do something to fill the gap.
Yes, and, yes, and potentially, an outside contractor could be less expense than an employee, potentially.
More per hour?
Yes.
Kind of depends what kind of hours you get out of them.
Yep.
But we do use a ditch inspector for other things, like, right?
Yes.
Whenever they drive snow...
Historically, we've, I don't think we've required a CDL, but we try to get them up to speed of the CDL so they can help us with plowing. They'll help us on construction projects. If we need someone taking tickets from a paving job or something, extra set of hands, helping with the crew with traffic control, they're available to help in other places in the department.
So we do utilize them.
Yes. And I'd say they'll have plenty workload for the foreseeable future, you know, long, long term, 10, 15 years down the road. I do think maybe we could evolve into more of a hybrid, shared position, but until we get caught up, I'm not looking at that.
Okay.
And we don't do any drone spraying of ditches, do we?
No drone spraying. Drone inspection is something I've been curious about, but we haven't gone anywhere with it. I know the Sheriff's Department has some drones that we maybe could share. Otherwise, the drone technology is not as expensive as it once was either. So for simply a, a camera-ing of a ditch, I think that's something I'd like to look at, once we have a ditch inspector. I don't want to go putting that all together and then hire someone. I want to hire someone, and it be their, their project, their passion.
Do you know other counties that do that?
Drone inspections? I know others do, which ones, I don't know. I, I've seen it at, there's a ditch inspectors meeting twice a year I've been to, and they'll talk about their drone inspections. So I know some do.
I've never thought about that.
We, we were going someplace the other day, and I saw my first drone spraying live.
Really?
I think it carries a big tank. And all of a sudden, I'm just driving, there was right there, turning around to make its next pass on the field, and it was just, that was something. It really was.
The technology is continually evolving.
Well, the thing to me about drone spraying is you don't have the operator anywhere within the mist or the overspray, or the, the potential to inhale it while it's being sprayed. You take away that safety factor.
And we could have an opportunity down the road to move towards that. For now, it's just inspection. A lot of our ditches still have a significant amount of trees, heavy vegetation, so drone functionality at a level where you would apply chemical isn't practical yet.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. And now for the fun stuff! Aye, both same side, motion carries. And now for the fun stuff.
For the fun stuff. So, annual report and kinda just an update overview of our department. And when I say department, I'm just including the highway and ditch piece of Public Works, I didn't put um, parks in here cause Parks is coming later this summer, I think, to give a presentation overview of the park side. So, probably hard to read stuff, but that's just a snapshot and org chart of what our department looks like. Over on the left, that's where Parks exists, I won't go into that. And then, the next step is our Public Works Superintendent, if you're working left to right, that's our highway maintenance. So they are responsible for our two, two mechanics that work in the shop, take care of our equipment and then all of our heavy equipment operators and our other maintenance personnel. And under that Public Works Superintendent, we have an assistant superintendent who runs the crew. He's on site with them most of the time, runs their day-to-day, sets up their projects for them. And then the Public Works Superintendent is directly in charge of our heavy equipment operators that work in our outshops, operating blades a majority of their, their work time. Then if you move over one more slot, that's kind of our engineering, directly in the, I'd call it the center. We have an assistant engineer responsible for our projects, a design specialist, a technician specialist, the designer puts our plans together permitting, all of that kinda project inception stuff. And then the technician specialist is our head inspector, they're in charge of our projects while the work is being done. Our design tech helps them, our engineering tech helps everybody. We're small, if you looked and see the numbers in parentheses, those are a number of employees in those positions, there's a lot of ones. Other than operator, operators are pretty specialized, cause we're a smallish county, so we don't have multiples of a lot of things, so we do move around and help each other out when needed. Move over one more slot, that's our highway accountant and office manager, um, she pays the bills, takes care of the money. And then ditch inspector, which is currently vacant, but over on the right, hanging out. And then on the right-hand side, some part-time positions, if you're curious about them, we, contractor, county surveyor, I think officially they're through the administrator's office. Um, then we have some seasonal mowers and snowplowers, um, engineering staff from time to time.
Just can, one question, Phil. Our mechanics, you have a lead and then a, how deep do they go for the repairs or?
It, it depends on the equipment, if it's something that they have capacity for, we rebuild transmissions, we can do most anything that doesn't require deeply specialized equipment.
Okay.
Um, and the technology they try and keep up with through the use of, I don't know what to call it, like scanners, something we talked about recently, upgrading our scanning equipment so that we can diagnose most of our stuff.
Okay.
It's hard to define where that line is, cause it's different depending on what's all in the shop waiting to get done and what our level of expertise is, but we try to do, I'd say, really throw in a number out, eighty percent. Of our work. And then if we don't have capacity, can't handle it, that's when we ship it off to our, our vendors that we work with.
Just for a ballpark figure, what do our vendors get per hour when they work on equipment?
I'm guessing shop rates are probably a hundred and fifty bucks an hour. And then hauling, if the equipment has to leave, there's significant cost when we have to go offsite.
And do our mechanics have to have any type of certification?
I know that we get certified for overhead cranes, that's an annual inspection and process they go through and then DOT certifications, we do DOT certs on all of our own equipment.
Okay.
So they go through that, I don't know if that's an annual re-up, but I know that's what they're um, set up to be able to do in-house as far as certifications.
Okay, thank you.
For our highway system, just to give you a kind of an overview of all the roads in Meeker County, um, kinda started in an odd place, but the roads most important to Meeker County are probably our two hundred and seventy-three miles of cassas, state aids, seesaws, whatever you wanna call them. Um, we're responsible for all aspects of those county-state aid roads, they're kinda the second tier, the trunk highways are the highest-use roads, the cassas are second in Meeker County. There's a pretty substantial funding that comes to those roads through gas tax, auto vehicle sales tax, state-level taxes that comes down to us, when you see state aid funds, that's the money coming down from gas tax and um, various state things. We also have nineteen miles of gravel still on our state aid system, um, I think that's gonna remain for the time being, cause paving's expensive and they're doing okay. Um, higher use than state, I mentioned, and then the next tier below our state aids is our township road system. We have seven hundred and seventy-five miles of township roads in Meeker County. Meeker County maintains about six hundred and eighty of those seven hundred and seventy-five miles through our maintenance agreements with our various townships. A little bit unique, there's other counties that do township maintenance, I think as far as the scale of what we're doing, we're the biggest or one of the biggest, um, where we are definitely unique is we don't have county roads, if you've heard me talk about that. Most counties giving this presentation would talk about their trunk highways, cassas, county roads and then township roads. We have no county roads. County roads don't get access to the state funding, the um, gas tax, stated money, so we'd fund that through the levy. Those were shifted to the townships in nineteen sixty-nine and I think that's what spawned our maintenance agreement. You take the county roads, make them township roads, we'll help maintain them via contract. And you'll find out, you'll see later on, we do subsidize the township maintenance program and that's probably why, because they took some of our roads. Townships, so we do various maintenance activities for them, we help them with their paving projects, um, when we have capacity. And they are funding their roads, I'd say through their county, through somewhat through the county levy because of how we subsidize the maintenance and then their township levy and there's a little bit of state taxes that they do get annually, I think it's maybe eight hundred bucks a mile they're currently getting from the state, that's gas tax for them. Then trunk highways, I mentioned, busiest roads, I'd call trunk highways and then city streets. So inside of municipalities, there's city streets and there's state aids, we do have some state aids that are municipal state aids. We're responsible for them, but they run through a city. So duties in our department related to highway. So road maintenance, there's a list, all the things we do, um, I'd say a couple of the biggest ones are gonna be our snow and ice and gravel road blading, pavement maintenance. Rural ditch mowing, I suppose that actually rises pretty high too, just because of the miles of ditches that we mow, it turns into a pretty big operation. Construction, we design and build our own specifications for our major projects, with the exception of bridges, we do most everything internally unless we get into something specialized, um, that we just don't have experience with. We handle our contract administration, we get our own permits, do all the environmental work, acquire right-of-way when necessary, jump through the state and federal process, who seems to be growing with every project, uh, we just submitted a bridge on Cassat thirty-four last week and just the number of documents we have assembled and put together just for the review process, we're not even building it yet, is substantial. It's a lot of paper. And then construction inspection, we have staff that inspect our own projects, um, right now with the exception of bridges, hoping now that we have filled that technician role to migrate into bridge inspection at some point, cause we are spending real dollars on bridge inspection, I'd like to get away from that in the future if we can. Do our own survey work, stake for the contractors and then document, there's a lot of documentation requirements with our construction projects to basically make sure the contractor's doing what they said, test the materials, document the tests, track quantities, um, hold the contractor accountable is really what we're doing. And then accounting, that's also in our highway department, pay the bills, request and handle the funds in and out from the state, federal, wherever we're getting the money and then handle our cost accounting. We have to cost account everything we do on our roads and that basically turns, turns numbers, if you looked at our annual report, into a per-mile rate. We have a rate on everything, that's just a conglomeration of all of our, the money we spend, the things we buy. Equipment, so when we get through the budget process, you'll notice I'm always asking for equipment, well, it takes a lot of equipment to do what we're doing, just a, a list of what we've got going on. Twenty pickup, seventeen plow trucks, thirteen motor graders, the tractor mowers, nine tractor mowers. They do the rural ditch mowing and they also serve as our loader, equipment to load our trucks at the outshops. Two skid loaders, one payloader that exists at the Litchfield shop, we use that for loading trucks in the winter, share it with Men Dot, they use it some too. If you ever hear about private drainage and ditches, we have one tractor backup, we don't have an excavator nor do we have the capacity to go out cleaning our road ditches, um, so we're a little bit limited with what we can do as far as removing sediment from a road ditch. And then there's lots of specialized equipment we use for trees, brush and pavement maintenance. Fun stuff, pictures. So a couple of our plows were sick that day, but that's fifteen out of the seventeen, I mean, it, it adds up, just, it's, it even kinda speaks to me when I see a picture of all the trucks at one time, it, it's more than a number, that's a lot of iron sitting there. And when it snows, it all has to work.
So, Phil, when I look at that picture and I see the pond, is that adjacent to Johnson Drive or am I looking at this just backwards?
Yep, you're looking to the northwest in this picture, that pond is just west of Johnson Drive.
Okay.
So are some of these, you just keep for a extra if something breaks down, are they all, they're not all out on the?
We'll put them all out if we have.
Oh, they are?
Bodies to put in them, yep. So I think last year we ran twenty-six routes. And if we get enough part-timers in, we'll put every piece on the road if it's available. Now I'll tell you how often is every piece not in the shop needing some work, it's probably below average. You know, usually there's something that's down.
But we're normally short on part-time drivers.
Or we're short on a couple of drivers, yeah.
Has that gotten better?
No, I don't expect it to, we, we don't have much new interest, we still have some part-timers that are willing to come back each year, but the list shrinking, it's not growing.
I feel like that used to kinda be a big deal, they'd retire, but then they'd come back and blade or plow and now, everybody's getting older.
But we've, we've been doing. And we've been doing okay because we've got our parks workers that have CDLs now.
Yeah.
Trying to use our ditch inspector when that's filled, have them get a CDL, um, where else we can tap, our sign technician is an operator, so they're running one of the plow trucks too.
I think when male commissioners resign, resign or don't run again, they could probably drive plow trucks.
You know.
I know, you know.
I actually had a picture of a commissioner getting into a truck, so I think you have a future right there.
If I had to do that again, I couldn't do it, I'll tell you that.
We do ask that you have a CDL, but we can't waive that.
Oh, okay.
I know the answer to this is probably complicated and depends on how much snow we have that day, but having one extra truck, you know, adding an extra truck, having seventeen instead of sixteen, how much time does that cut off of, you know, the first pass in a snowstorm? You know, know what I'm asking? Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, we did expand our fleet, over the course of the last four years, we added operators and we have added, I think, two trucks and lost a blade in recent history. And, you know, one truck of seventeen, it's a percentage. Whatever, what's one divided by seventeen, whether it's a calculator, it's not significant, so to get across our system, if it's a light snow, quick and easy, I'd say six hours is doable. If you add a truck, that might become five hours and forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Is it noticeable to the public? Probably not, um, that's one challenge with the scale of what we're doing. Making big additions, maybe don't show up to the level where the public notices or is interested.
Okay.
And I think where we're at now, seems to work for snow and ice, um, I'll also say the last two winters have not been that aggressive as far as snowfall totals. The blowing snow, yeah, we've had icy roads, but not a lot of snow accumulation.
You know, Phil, one thing that has really been good and that's when you put that GPS where you could tell where the truck was at a certain time, was the blade up or down and so forth. When I get a call from somebody, I'm, I'll just, Phil, what about this, he'll give me the time it was plowed. Was the blade down, what happened and it really works out well, uh, to kinda quash the, question, my road didn't get plowed.
Do you get fewer calls now, I?
Yeah, I don't get, well, we haven't had any snow either, but.
Have a lot out there, but I don't, I used to get calls anyway and I don't think I do much anymore.
And that, you're referring to our AVL, so it's our Automated Vehicle Location Service, it's GPS on our equipment that also maps, we set up maps so we can see what our route coverage is, where everything is, when it was there, what's covered, what's not covered. And when I talk about the twenty-six routes, part of what we have is, we might have twenty-six routes, but we've only got twenty-two guys today. So we're mixing and matching a lot and that map really helps us make sure we're getting things covered. And reduce calls, that's probably why, we get a lot less calls than we used to as far as you missed this dead end, this didn't get plowed coming back the next day to clean up things that were missed because we can track it real time with what is and what is not getting hit. And, and it's easier to move resources around too, cause we can see where we're at.
And if you ever take a drive and see some of the deadhead roads that they have to find a way to turn that monster equipment around, you go, wow.
And the same, the same people that complain, complain if they go two inches up on their driveway while they're turning around, so. It's kind of a non-win situation at times, I've found.
Yep. Um, then this, this is a picture, sorry, picture of our blade fleet, so thirteen in this picture, um, there's a lot of iron hanging from them too, if you look at that wing off the side, the front plow. Ed could tell you our superintendent, but the width they can plow with these blades when they're going down the road is incredible, I think the mold board is thirteen feet plus the wing. It's probably almost thirty feet.
Wow.
Now, they don't do that because traffic.
Yeah.
But they can wing out pretty wide while clearing their road. We typically try to keep the trucks on pavement and the blades on gravel, but we do fudge back and forth where we have to, cause you can't always be perfect. Just some pictures of other equipment we have in the shop, up on the right, that's what one of our tractor mower setups looks like. I'll tell you, between the nine tractor mowers, I think we have four different configurations. We try to put them where they make the most sense, cause some townships, you might not be able to mow as wide because of how steep the ditch is or what they have as an obstacle in the bottom of the ditch. Some of our state aids have really wide areas we can cut, so we can go out there with wider equipment that knocks down more in one pass. There's our payloader, a crew truck and one of our skid loaders set up for pushing snow.
And, and your mower, uh, group made up about half blue, half green? I see a lot of blue.
Probably, yeah, lately, New Holland has been um, the better option price-wise. So I think we're probably about fifty-fifty now. Our older stuff is mostly John Deere, um, we don't have anything but John Deere in New Holland right now. Highway shops, I won't get too deep into this, but just so you have an idea where our shops are, my little red circles, we've got nine of them around the county. Um, the one down in Cedar Mills, southeast corner, corner of the county, that's really cold storage right now, we're not active in that shop in the winter. I'd like to consolidate this, you'll hear more about it in the future. That's all I had for highways, any questions specifically about our highway system, what we do?
No, I think, I just wanna say this, I think we have some of the best roads. Some of the counties I've traveled, I was over in Lion County last week and we got a detour because of a, a, an accident and I had to go down one of their county road, or their, we are superior. Our blacktop roads, our cassas are superior to some of these other counties.
You really noticed that when you get, I was in another county this weekend too and I cut a, and I noticed the same thing, that I think we do a pretty good job, you do a pretty good job.
Our roads are in pretty good shape, our bridges.
Well, that's another start. It's all that heavy equipment.
I'm gonna need a drink of coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when you're on the bridge, you're only on it for a few seconds.
You just need to pick up your speed and do the dukes of hazard over that thing.
Our county ditch system, so a common question I get from the public is county ditches, you road ditches, right? No, it's not our road ditches, county ditches is a separate group of, it's a public drainage system, it's not our road ditches. We have about a hundred and seventy miles of open ditches, sixty, fifty-five miles of tile. Um, yes, tile lines can be a county ditch, they're funded by benefiting properties, um, not the levy. County ditch versus judicial ditch, so if you see that, the only difference is a JD crosses a county line. There's multiple counties that have interest in that ditch system. When we have to have hearings, things where the drainage authority, which can be the county board or a group of county board members from other counties, you get multiple counties involved for a drainage authority for a judicial ditch. Duties we have on the ditch system, so we're responsible, like Paul mentioned earlier, every five years, we're supposed to be completing our inspections. Are we up on that? No, we haven't been for a very long time, but that's our goal, to get up on our five year inspections and complete the work that we're uncovering with those inspections. That includes weed and brush maintenance, so we can access the ditch, get to it with the equipment. Permits, there's always gonna be probably an increasing amount of permitting required through the Army Corps, through the DNR, through our local soil and water with Wetland Conservation Act requirements, to make sure the ditch repairs we're doing aren't violating the environmental requirements, that's why we're going through the permit processes. Most common repairs, like I said, trees, cleanouts, sediment accumulates in these ditches over time, that's where the cleanout comes from, to try and restore the capacity of the ditch to do what it was designed to do years ago.
Phil, you noted that ditches are to be inspected every five years and we're falling behind, is there some sort of a penalty for that?
There's no penalty, there was case law from, I think it was somewhere in Sterns County. There's no penalty. There was case law from, I think it was somewhere in Sterns County. Three or four years ago, there was a municipality that had, I think it was a city ditch, but similar to what we do with their county ditches, and they hadn't been inspecting it. There was property damage and they lost substantially financially when a lawsuit came about. Because they had not been completing the inspections.
So it leaves us in in a liable position.
We're exposed liability wise and just from just a logical point of view, we want these ditches to work.
Absolutely.
Paying for them to do what they're supposed to do.
Yep.
So we want to do the inspection so that we can make the repairs.
Absolutely.
Um, processes that some of you have been exposed to, probably not all of you yet. Redetermination of benefits, that's a process where we look at the benefits, who pays how much for a ditch system based on how much you benefit. And that gets adjusted, because some of our systems are still a benefit set from eighteen ninety six. When at the time, they maybe just took everyone that lives along the ditch and split it up. Well, modern technology and survey abilities help us better calculate. Who benefits how much from that drainage, whether it being your swamp, being a tillable field because of the ditch, or it's a meadow. That's what they look at through that process. We don't do that internally. There's viewers, if you've heard of that, they are appointed. Usually, I think it's three of them, to look at properties, work with an engineering firm typically, do the survey work, and then come up with. Values of what that ditch is worth to each parcel. And that's what splits up the money. To decide who pays for the work when work happens on the ditch system. Um, reestablishment of records, that's just trying to reestablish where the ditch was supposed to be. If we don't have good plans, we. I'd say fifty fifty, sometimes we do have the old plans, but half the time we do not. And then other legal proceedings that go with ditches, you've seen some of them, um, try to avoid the ones that aren't related to the. Reestablishment or redetermination if we can.
Phil, can I ask you a bit, a question about the um, the clean outs and the 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 contracts, how that. Gets established in terms of who does that? I had a guy who was kind of upset, he had, somebody else was cleaning out a ditch on his own property, and he says. I actually cleaned ditches in other counties, and I had, for some reason, he said he did, wasn't aware. That it was being contracted out and, you know, he was like, I could have just done it and, you know, myself and is, how does that work?
Yep, most of our cleanings are under the bid threshold, which is a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar value. So we don't do a formal bid process, we'll solicit contractors for quotes. We try to make sure we have a healthy group, like. I'd say three is the minimum. I've seen us send quotes out to as many as eight or nine contractors. And then typically, we'll award it to the low quote. If we have really small jobs and we just want it done now, we do direct select from time to time. I'm talking like a fifteen hundred dollar job. We'll just pick somebody that's close. Availability has been recently an issue, where I've done some direct selects just to get something done that's not progressing. Um, but it it really depends on cost.
So the 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 landowner with the ditch in their property is not particular, they're not like solicited to.
No, no specific notice to landowners on the ditch.
That would make sense.
What I'll tell any contractor that wants to do ditch work, let us know, the more the merrier. We'll send out a quotes request to anybody, or if someone approaches us. When we're looking for contractors, they can certainly participate in the process.
Okay, yeah, good to know.
One thing, just, we don't let just anybody bid, though, we have insurance requirements, that not all contractors. I mean, they probably could meet them, but they don't want to go out and buy that level of insurance. So I know that's a hurdle sometimes for contractors that express interest.
Well, this guy was actually saying he does ditches for other counties. I was like surprised.
But we s- we certainly don't want uh homeowners that are on the ditch, going out and just doing work on the ditch without going through the.
Right, exactly.
Will get you in a world of hurt.
For sure. Well, we've seen that.
Yeah, so he just needs to call.
Yeah, get debt. If they want to be part of our group, we have a list we maintain. And I'll add them to the list when we do work that's kind of in their area. We gladly accept a quote.
We have, I think we have used people that owned land by the ditch if they got permission ahead of time and stuff.
Little easy stuff, yes.
Little s- little things.
It happens with tile a lot, if there's, somebody finds a tile failure in their ditch, they've got a contractor on site working on theirs, hey. Can we together just fix this quick? Yeah, we we handle that without saying, no, everybody wait.
Yeah.
We'll go get a contractor, get quotes, no, fix it. Take pictures, make sure it's done right.
Nice. Thank you.
How often do we do the redetermination of benefits? And is there, what's the cost of that?
Yeah, we don't have a formal um, trigger. I guess what I think of with the redetermination of benefits, if we're looking at a substantial level of work, something that's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars. CD fifteen hundreds of thousands of dollars. We should decide how those costs are split up before we incur all that cost. Um, the price of it, fifteen would be a good example, because that's a big system down in the Dassel, Collinwood area. I'm half guessing. Um, I know it's expensive.
I think when we did seventeen, it was about fifty thousand dollars.
And that's a medium sized system?
Seventeen and nineteen. Um, landowners petition for redetermination as well, which we've had happen on a couple of occasions.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, only one landowner has to petition and we have to act.
I don't, I don't recall the specific, I mean, yes, we have to act upon the petition, but I don't recall the specific, or it's when we have to actually do the red.
But we could choose to go through a redetermination on all of our systems if we wanted. Um, one thing that triggers on our really small systems is a lot of administrative cost for a little benefit.
Right.
So on the very small systems, I'd maybe shy away from it. Um, but the bigger systems, if we're going to do major work, I think they should be redetermined. I know, well, McLeod County, they're trying to redetermine all, redetermine all of their systems. We could look at something like that, but. Um, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
I think Renville did too, didn't they? I think they.
I would assume so, just based on how their drainage systems are set up.
They have, Renville has a lot more ditch.
Yes.
Than we do, obviously.
And they're bigger, deeper.
Or smaller compared to some of these counties.
And I'll show you some pictures in a minute. Our our ditches, we've kind of got all kinds of ditches. We don't have big, open, deep ditches per se. We have a couple. But we have some ditches that might surprise you that they're ditches when you look at a picture of them. Here we are, pictures. So these are county ditches. The picture on the left, it's just a. A creek, you can see that it's been straightened a little bit at one point in time. That's what kind of makes you visually see this is a ditch. Um, this ditch specifically, vegetation control, like I talk about, it'd be hard to get equipment down here to do work, so that's where. Our goal is to have control, not mature trees on one rod on each side. That's our right of way along our ditch. So here I could see some tree cleaning needed, picture on the right, that's a beaver that got tired of us removing their dam and we didn't get the beaver trapped, well. They made it harder to get the dam out. It doesn't maybe look like much there, but it's in the, it's down in the pipe, getting that unblocked was a challenge. Beavers are smart. I've learned that. Other county ditches, so on the left, that's just a ditch running left, left right across your screen. It's kind of in a marsh swampy area. On the right, there's a ditch. Kind of looks like a tornado went through. There's just trees and brush and everything everywhere. It probably is in need of a cleaning in addition to vegetation removal. On the left, uh, plugged culvert led to Mother Nature kind of taking. Control and just washing out the approach that used to exist across those culverts. So if maintenance isn't completed, sometimes water has power, it'll cut a new path. Um, down below, that's a county ditch that runs from behind the person taking the picture out through that cattail swamp. That's where if you've heard me um, talk about, well, on ditch seventeen, we did the, can't remember the name of the equipment, but it flings the mud. That would be a tool you'd use in this situation. What's it called?
The cookie cutter?
Cookie cutter, thank you.
Yes.
Um, because we can't really get an excavator out into the swamp, and we, if we did, we'd have to haul the material out of the swamp, so it's a tool we use.
So as we look at that picture on the bottom, is that one of those where we might have an issue with the DNR?
Um, we'll go through a permitting process, but I would be confident they would allow the cookie cutter process. If we wanted to take an excavator out and create a channel, with that, we would probably have to go out on swamp mats. They'd say you have to remove everything from the site, dig out, which means you have to somehow haul through that. So we wouldn't want to do that, but I think with a cookie cutter, we could navigate the permit process without trouble. Um, on the right, that's just a picture of a freshly completed ditch cleaning before some alterations were made. You see, we left the bank mostly in place, place spoils off to the left. We try not to disturb the bank any more than we have to for erosion purposes, because when you lose that vegetation, you lose the soil.
So, and just a quick question, is Holly learning all this that I did, or where are we at with that?
Bring her up to speed as I can. You know, the auditor's office mainly is doing the financial work.
Yeah.
So when we talk about how the bills get spread, that comes out of the auditor. Yeah, she's pretty knowledgeable with ditches. She's come to trainings with me and we talk from time to time, bring her up to speed with specific issues.
The answer's yes. We're getting her to work for us.
So a little bit from our annual report, every year we're required to complete an annual report for the highway department. We're kind of going back to roads again here. Um, just going to cover some highlights from our annual report. There's a number of major construction projects. Probably completed about double this, but I don't want to talk about all the little ones. These are the big ones. Casat thirty four in town, most of you probably familiar with this road, connects US Highway twelve with Trunk Highway twenty four. Uh, a couple of years ago, very rough, hard to drive on, but the pavement was in good shape, so we had to come up with. What's a good solution for a road like this? So we did something new to Meeker County, but it's not really new to the construction industry. A micro mill. It's just a finer textured mill with more teeth. I'll show you a picture in a minute. Um, so we ground the existing pavement to a profile to smooth out the high spots, I'd say. And then came back with an overlay over the top to address any low spots. Worked well, road. Or the road rides a lot better than it did before the project. It was about a half million dollar project. Paid for a hundred percent by our state aid funds, that's state gas, state gas tax.
Did you say that that's the most traveled road in?
I'd expect it is. I think it's at like six thousand A T, if I remember right.
Okay.
That's very high. Most of our state aids are probably in that seven, eight, nine hundred range.
What was the distance? Oh, one point seven miles, okay.
One point seven miles, yep. But just a very busy road, because it's connecting two trunk highways. Anytime you have a short segment between trunk highways, it gets heavily used.
Yep, and it can you also bypass the town?
Yep, you could use it as a bypass. I I know that some people do.
Yep.
There's just a picture of the mill head, so that has three to four times the teeth of a traditional mill. And it's got a thirteen foot wide head, so it covers the entire lane in one shot versus multiple passes. Just helps you get a smoother, more consistent surface to uh, make the overlay afterwards more effective as far as improving the ride.
Is that our piece of equipment?
No.
Oh, I don't think we have.
Wait, anything you're seeing in construction here, we contract that out. We don't, we don't own specialized equipment like this. I, you wouldn't want to know how much it costs.
I know, that's where I was looking at that kind of.
Casatu reclaim pave and overlay, so that's up in, from Forest City north up to Clear Lake. So this was kind of a combination project, five miles inside of Forest City. Um, the pavement was in very poor shape, so we went with a reclaim in Forest City, south of the bridge, over the river on the north end of town. Um, so grind it up, level it out, pave it back. Then north, the pavement was in fair shape, but we wanted to extend the life. So we overlaid and did a notch and widen, we call it, where we add two feet of pavement to each side of the road. Helps with safety, shoulder maintenance, um, a number of things we benefit from by widening our pavements a little bit, where we have shoulders to widen into. Um, successful project, I was happy with it. It was about a one point three million dollar job. There again, hundred percent state aid funds. Oh, a little thing about this two project, this was the project that discovered the issue on the Casatu Bridge, because we did a load analysis. As part of this project, to make sure, we were going to remove and replace the pavement on the bridge. But you have to know the weight of that mill, the trucks, all that material you're dumping, moving around, can that bridge support it? Well, and that's when the analysis came back with, no, it can't, and it can't support. Standard loaded vehicles either, so that's why it's now rated as a fourteen ton bridge.
It's probably why they had the uh, bridge failure in the cities a few years ago, they forgot to do the.
It happens, and and that's why we're much more cognizant now than we were maybe ten or fifteen years ago about. When we have a project where we're looking at addressing the surfacing on a bridge, take a look at that bridge, don't just assume it's fine. Actually, you have a formal analysis to make sure that it can support the load, you're going to stress it with. Darwin reconstruction, so this was um, ran by a consultant in the city of Darwin, but I just included it because it's on one of our state aids through town. Just to give you a snapshot of cost, if you look down at the bottom and the top, it's zero point three miles, it was a one point two million dollar project. Municipal reconstructs are very expensive per mile. Um, it it's something we're going to be seeing more of in Meeker County. If you drive our city streets, the state aids in cities. I'd say they've been neglected compared to our rural stretches, so we're going to be seeing more action inside cities. Um, part of the reason for that neglect is the coordination that has to go on between the city and the county. And when you look at the project cost of something like this, city of Darwin, not real big, had to come up with a million dollars. To fund their part of the project, and that's challenging for our small communities. So that's something I've been working on and I'll continue to work on, trying to coordinate with our small cities to get some of these roads improved. I don't want to improve our road surface without knowing that their underground infrastructure's been addressed. Manana Township Bridge, so five ninety second street up in the township of Manana, North Fork of the Pro River. Replaced an old bridge, a very long bridge, almost two hundred feet, that's, I haven't looked, but maybe the longest bridge in Meeker County. Um, bridges are expensive, one point five million dollars for that bridge replacement. As you see, township bridges have access to township bridge funding, which is great. It's actually a pretty stable funding source. It comes down from the gas tax and the formula that distributes that money. So the township had to pay twenty thousand dollars for their one point five million dollar bridge. Some pictures of the bridge. You know, you you see these concrete bridges and you think that's a lot of concrete, but maybe what you don't realize is how much steel is in those bridge decks. Anybody venture to guess how many pounds of steel is in that bridge deck?
Thirty five.
Double it. Sixty thousand pounds of steel goes into that bridge deck. Most of your strength's actually from the steel. The concrete is. Being your buffer and your compressive component, I guess, strength wise, but that steel carries a lot of the strength on that bridge. Kingston Township, so this was another new project for us. Kingston Township approached us about their seven hundred and thirty second avenue. Not that old of a pavement, but it had structural issues. It was too weak to handle what that road is being used for. And they wanted to maintain it as a paved road, so we looked at options and we came up with the cement stabilized. Um, full depth reclamation, so we talked about FDR, full depth reclamation, we do that all the time. This is the first time we tried a cement stabilized version. So what we did, you grind up the existing road. You lay cement powder down on the gravel, and then you run a reclaim machine that blends it all together. And injects water. You're basically making a poor man's concrete, is what I'd call it. You're not getting the strength of concrete, but you're increasing the strength of that gravel base substantially. Very successful project, I'd say we overshot our target. We tried to build a ten ton road, we built a thirteen to seventeen ton road, which.
Wow.
Extremely strong, so that should definitely help it last a very long time.
So how long does something like that last, when you?
This project?
Yeah, I mean, when you do it that way, when you.
I'd say a lot of that's going to depend on what you do with your asphalt moving forward. If you just leave it sit and don't crack fill, don't patch, don't overlay at any point. I'd say you should still get twenty five, maybe thirty years out of it. If you do proper maintenance, a road like this with the strength underneath that pavement. Maybe I'm optimistic, but I think you could make that last fifty years, but that includes the maintenance activities.
I will say, Phil, I was at the Kingston Township Board meeting and they were real proud of that.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, they felt really good about how that worked out, so.
And where we could have trimmed a little bit, you know, we don't want to over design, because over design costs more money than we needed to spend, so we probably could have backed off on our. Cement content, made a little weaker base to hit our ten ton target, but I'd much rather overbuild than underbuild, because if you underbuild. You have premature failure and that happens fast, and that's what that road had experienced. I want to say it was twenty years old or less, the pavement that was out there. And we don't want to be grinding up twenty year old pavements. That's not cost effective.
Yep.
Some pictures of that process, so what you're seeing on the left is the road's been reclaimed, and then they go along with what's called a vein spreader, and they. Spread a metered amount of cement, Portland cement powder on the surface. And on the right, you see them, there's a water truck in front of that reclamer. They're pushing the water truck, injecting a specified amount of water. Into the reclamer while it mixes everything together, like a concrete drum, you could kind of say. And out the back comes your loose concrete dish product, then they pack it down. Total construction numbers for twenty twenty four, it was about a four or five point four million dollar program. You can see where the funds came. Township Bridge Funds was just one bridge, that was a big chunk of money, um, spent. About two million dollars in state aid money, the city funds on the Darwin project. About two million dollars in state aid money, the city funds on the Darwin project, Township Funds, uh, most of that came from the Kingston Township project. And there, you didn't see it in here, but there was a little bit of federal money sprinkled in for some federal safety programs with, related to paint. Highway maintenance costs, so in our annual, our annual report, we break down all of our costs, like you said, we cost account everything. A lot of numbers here, I'm not gonna go through everything in detail. What I'll say that you see in this snapshot of state aid maintenance and township maintenance is, we did have lighter snow and ice seasons, that's why our snow and ice costs were down. Those were replaced by, the guys are still working, so a lot more weed, or not weed, but tree and brush control. A lot more shoulder maintenance, culvert projects, minor tasks that they can still do in the winter when it's not snowing. Costs, actual costs relatively flat for the last really two years, so lighter snow and ice seasons have helped us offset some of the increases we may otherwise have seen. Maintenance receipts, this matches our costs, but just to give you an idea where the money's coming from, um, state aid maintenance, vast majority of that money is coming from our gas tax, that's our casaa, our state aid money. A little bit of levy dollars, now I don't allocate specific dollars from the levy to our state aids. The levy is doing things like buying equipment and kind of bridging that gap over and above what we get from state aid. Maybe one thing I didn't mention, our state aid money is fixed based on a formula. So many dollars go into that pot, and they go down through a formula distributed to where they end up. We get what we get. Um, we've been slowly increasing, like I'm projecting a three percent increase from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six. It is what it is when they actually get their receipts, depending on fuel sales, auto parts, sales, tax. So, that said, levy, levy fills the gap. Township maintenance, uh, township fees, so the townships do pay a fee for our services. Um, last year it was about six hundred thousand dollars in total. Uh, we do some billable work for townships that aren't the big three things, blading, snow and ice, and mowing. Those billable items amounted to about seventy-six thousand dollars last year. And then levy funds, so there again, I'm filling the gap of where, what other funding I don't have for those maintenance costs. And in two thousand and twenty-four, we've been trying to get to that thirty-seventy split for a few years now, and we've steadily been increasing our township maintenance fee. We did achieve thirty percent in two thousand and twenty-four for costs. If we have a heavy snow year, I guarantee you, we're gonna not be at thirty percent again, but that helped us get there.
Is that contract with the townships, is that do it, how many year contract?
It's perpetual.
Oh, okay.
We adjust the fee three years in advance of the year, but the contract is ongoing until there's a, there's language in there about us canceling, township canceling, so that can be done, but it's perpetual for now.
So, we don't renegotiate every so many years or anything?
Nope, nope, we wanted to kind of keep things steady. The township wants consistency. That's, that's what they're really looking for, is my understanding.
It seems to have worked better that way, because there was a lot of disruption earlier, complaining. I don't hear all that anymore.
I think it was two years ago, you went around, or maybe three, you went to every township meeting. Talked about that period, four years?
Yeah.
It's been four.
Twenty twenty-one.
Got the, got the townships to pick up some of their dead ends and clean bran, tried to open some commu- communication.
Yep, I, I went to all the township meetings to try and explain what we wanted to accomplish, understand what they wanted us to do. And we can't, we can't do everything that the townships want us to do. Some of them want to be more hands off versus hands on, but we need to be consistent with our townships, that was the primary message I tried to share, and I think it was well received.
I do too, you did a good job. And this is one of the few, are there counties left in the state that still do this besides?
Township maintenance, the way we do it, maybe not. Like I said earlier, we're the only county that has zero county roads. But there's certainly other township, or other counties that do township maintenance. Some of them do hourly systems. I don't know if there's others that do a per mile system like we do.
But it was a couple of years ago, you had done kind of a, a little research and comparison. The folks in the townships would be paying more in township taxes than if we did it, it, it.
Yeah, I think on the grand scale, they're savings to the taxpayer in Meeker County with the system versus the alternative would be each township hires their own contractor, maybe has equipment and personnel. One, one avenue I kind of explored a little bit was maintenance district, so you could have three townships group up and build a building, have equipment, that maybe would be fair, that might work okay. But right now, we've got the equipment, do we have more equipment than we would otherwise? Yeah. Personnel, do we have more? Yeah, but we're able to cover it with something we're already doing. You know, our cost would be less, our personnel would be less if we didn't do the township system, but I think on, in the grand scheme, if you had add up all the townships, contractors and us, it would cost more if we weren't doing it.
And it's our two townships doing their own ice or?
Dassel and Collinwood, yep.
Dassel and Collinwood.
Dassel started doing their own before I got here, prior to two thousand and eighteen, and then Collinwood, I think in two thousand and nineteen, went on their own.
There was some talk about some of them coming back, but.
I hear whispers once in a while.
We've had not as much snow, so.
And those townships are on a busier part of the county, they've got some roads that have a higher level of need, I would say. So, they're able to dictate their service with a contractor versus getting a closer to a one size fits all with the county service.
Yeah, Collinwood bordering up against Wright County too is always a, a challenge for those folks.
And, and to be clear, the county, the townships that do their own maintenance, we do write them a check each year. We subsid, we give them the same subsidy our other townships are receiving.
So, they get the cash.
Dassel Township was, was, did they have, when I was talking to them, they almost were talking like they don't have a garage, they don't have.
Probably not, because they don't own any equipment as far as I know.
See, that's what I was wondering, like, because the way they talked, they were like, because I asked about a, a, you know, a potential, you know, place for, for mulch outside of the city, and they were like, we don't even have a building, this is why we gotta meet in the history center, because we got nothing really, and I was like, what? That was, it was a learning experience, you know?
I don't think any townships in Meeker County have, like, they have town halls, small buildings, but nothing that would house equipment, because they don't, they haven't had a need for equipment. Even the two that aren't using us, they're using contractors.
Yeah, yeah, that's, thank you, that's helpful for me. Any other questions for Phil? I just want to say thank you to you and your staff, because like I said, driving on Lion County twenty-four last week and comparing it to our roads, your staff does a.
It's always an eye opener when you get out of Meeker.
Yes.
And I do.
Direction you're going.
I do need to express the appreciation of the folks around Dassel, because you were, they were quick to take care of that corner that was on six there that we had talked about that was kind of getting beat up with all the extra traffic on six and thirty.
That's a superhighway now.
Oh, my God, well, I'm on it every day, so, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of the highway twelve, twelve traffic is using our Casas six, a lot. I drove it this morning again, it's.
A lot.
It's busy.
Yep, for sure.
So, I'm looking forward to twelve being open and.
As are we all.
Everybody is.
Everybody says that.
Well, there's, wasn't there a fatality accident on that detour this year too?
On the detour, I hadn't heard that. So, the, the official detour on, for twelve runs to the north on our Casatu twenty-one, and then the majority of it, I think, is in Wright County, but we have a little bit up there. I hadn't heard that if there was.
I could be thinking about there, but there was.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Director with three items for us today, huh?
Mikel, you are late.
Oh, never mind.
Good morning, Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Director, and I do have a couple insurance things for you today. Uh, so the first one is to approve the Hartford as the county's life insurance carrier for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight. Uh, so we regularly go out and do, um, RFPs, request for repo, for proposals uh, when we are coming to, uh, the end of a rate guarantee. And so, our ancillary broker is Integrity Benefits, and so they just have a schedule for us that every year when we're getting close to those rate guarantees being up, that we just proactively go out and look and see what else is out there, and sometimes we stay with what our current offering is, and sometimes we move. So, our life insurance was up, so this is the, uh, life insurance that we provide, our basic twenty thousand dollars of life insurance to all employees for, and that portion is paid by the county, so anyone that's working regularly thirty hours a week or more um, is eligible for that. And then, if employees also want to purchase any additional life insurance under that, either for themselves or their spouse, or there is also a small dependent package as well, they can do that, and that portion is a hundred percent paid for by the employee. So, we went out and looked, we received proposals from Sun Life, which is our current carrier, the Hartford Standard, Dearborn and Lincoln Financial. And so, we met as a health insurance committee and reviewed the different proposals that we received. And, uh, the, the recommendation is to move forward with the Hartford. Uh, the reason behind that is that the Hartford would open up the ability for all employees that are eligible to enroll in health insurance without doing a health questionnaire. And generally, anytime someone is enrolling after being a new hire, after that period has ended, they have to do a health questionnaire, or anytime that they're increasing the amounts that they want to do, they have to do a health questionnaire. So, uh, starting off with the Hartford, they would be waiving that requirement, and so all employees would have the opportunity to enroll in additional coverage from the basic that the county provides. Uh, it would also increase the amounts that employees can enroll in, the overall cap of what they can do, and it increases the child life benefit. So, currently for a dollar ninety-three a month, employees can enroll independent care, which is, which provides twenty-five hundred dollars for a child or five thousand dollars for a spouse. And what this would do is that it would increase the benefit that they can get for a child from twenty-five hundred to ten thousand dollars, uh, which is a great benefit, because obviously twenty-five hundred dollars really doesn't cover very much anymore if someone were to lose a child. The five thousand dollar portion for the spouse would be, would be removed, so they, if they did want to purchase um, additional coverage for their spouse, they would still be able to do so, it just would be under, it wouldn't be under that, like, a dollar, um, amount per month, so. Uh, there would also be a cost savings to the county for moving to the Hartford. This would be on the basic life portion that the county provides, that twenty thousand, so there, it wouldn't be a rate savings to the employees, but it would be a rate savings to the county of three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. We did review our current plan with Sun Life, and they were not willing to make some of those, um, plan design changes, so it was, they wouldn't allow employees to enroll without doing the, um, health insurance or the, um, health questionnaire. And so, and they also would not move, they wouldn't increase the amounts that people could enroll in, and they wouldn't uh, consider doing the ten thousand amount for the child, um, dependent life. So, uh, that is why the committee went forward with, um, recommending that we move to the Hartford.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Hartford as the county's life insurance carrier for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olberg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Art, is there any discussion?
Can they take this with them if they quit or retire or, and just pay themselves, or is it go away when they're done?
There is a con- continuation that they can enroll in, um, under Cobra, so they could use it for eighteen months under Cobra, and then I don't know what the Hartford does, I'll have to find that out once we move, but Sun Life has also been a conversion after the eighteen months that someone could pay, um, that to continue, but it would be on the employee to pay that.
Yeah, the employee then would pay the full share.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Or discussion? Okay, well, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries.
The next item that I have for you is to approve MetLife as the county's paid family medical leave claims administrator for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight. So, as I'm sure you're all aware, with the recent legislation with the state of Minnesota, we will have paid family leave starting in January of two thousand and twenty-six, so that is a state, um, decision. So, in speaking with Integrity, our ancillary broker, uh, they recommended that we also go out and seek proposals, uh, from private carriers. So, we have the option to either go through the state of Minnesota's, uh, website and their, and their administration, or we can, uh, seek out a private carrier. Uh, and it has to be that the, the benefit to the employee is the, is the same or greater to the employee. So, we did go out and seek proposals, we received proposals from MetLife, Madison National, Transamerica and Lincoln Financial. And so, again, the, the health insurance committee met and reviewed the proposals that we received. So, currently, the state of Minnesota's final rate that they, uh, came to for the payroll tax is point eight eight percent. And that will be reviewed yearly, so that could change on a yearly basis. MetLife was able to provide us with a rate of point seven nine percent, and that would be with a two-year guarantee. Uh, and so, that was a big consideration, obviously. Uh, we did review other, the other companies that provided proposals, uh, and others were either at the same rate as the state at that point eight eight percent, or they were higher than the state. So, that was one of the benefits with looking at MetLife. Uh, the other thing that is really beneficial is that MetLife has already been administering paid family leave in the other states that already have paid family leave, so they already have, um, expertise in how those programs run. And so, the overall experience would be expected that we'd have a better experience, both on my end as administering it in the H R side, and then also for the employee. It sounded like their claims would be, um, be determined and paid much faster than the state. They also just, are just very knowledgeable about it. Right now, the state of Minnesota is working to get their website up and running, they're working to hire, I don't know if it's around four hundred people to administer. Um, and don't quote me on that, but I believe it's around, it's a large amount of people to administer that. Uh, so, the overall experience with MetLife is just, we are hoping to have a, a good experience with them. We did attend, they had a webinar last week that walked through what their site looks like on both the employee side and then on the administrator's side, and it really was exciting to see how clear that website was, how supportive that website was, and also to hear how knowledgeable the people from MetLife were about that. Uh, also, in doing so, we would then also have the support of Integrity, so if we go through an insurance that they provide, they would help us with the support on that end. If we, uh, go with the state of Minnesota, we don't have that support because they don't administer that. There is a one-time five hundred dollar fee that the county would need to pay to the state in order to proceed with that. And then, if in the future the county decided that we did want to switch back to the state, uh, we would have to stay with the state for three years after switching. So, either way, the, the tricky part is, is that we have never done this before, and the state's never done this before, and so it's, it's all, you know, just trying to make our best decision based on the information that we have. But again, the nice thing is that MetLife has been administering this already, and so they do have a really knowledgeable team, um, on board, so. Uh, the county will still need to meet with the unions, because the cost split of that point seven nine percent is something that we would need to discuss with them.
So, is, right now, it's all on us?
Well, we're gonna discuss that in a little while.
So, are you telling me that in order to go elsewhere to do what they want us, what the state wants us to do, we have to pay them five hundred dollars?
Yes, that's correct.
I would like you to fight that in court.
So.
Why?
The, the two-year rate guarantee, what are the two other products that we use, just refresh me?
Through MetLife or?
Yeah.
Uh, so, we already have our hospital care, uh, accident and critical illness through MetLife. And then the next thing that we'll talk. And then the next thing that we'll talk about is the short-term disability as well.
Did, did they change any of this with legislation this year at all?
There were some minor changes.
But nothing that amounted to much?
Nothing that significantly changes the program.
But it could, it could change in two years or?
Could change at any point in the future.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve MetLife as the county's paid family medical leave claims administrator for January first, two thousand and twenty-six to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Art. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion?
I'm excited about this.
This, this is.
I am, I'm just like, we can avoid dealing with the Minnesota mess and for a cheaper premium, my word.
Well done finding them. Good job.
Are you excited about this particular proposal or the FML? I mean, which part are you excited about?
Well, we have to do it. It has to be done, but this is a way.
I can't get excited about.
No, but I'm excited about that, that we're able to circumvent the state.
It'll cost us five hundred dollars.
For the blackmail fee of five hundred dollars, you can.
Yeah, blackmail.
That's what it is.
And I'm excited, because when I hear our human resource director say, I saw this presentation.
Yes.
It was clean, it looks like it's gonna be. Yep. That means that their job's gonna be easier to do properly for the employees, so.
Hopefully. I mean, it looked, it looked beautiful. You never know if it's too good to be true, but it, it looked really nice, and so I, I was excited after seeing that.
We will see.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor, so I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
It looks good, but it's not a marriage.
All right, so the last thing that I have for you is approval of MetLife as the county's short-term disability carrier for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight. So obviously, with the implementation of paid family um, medical leave, then that impacts the short-term disability, because paid family is utilized first when someone goes out and then reduces the amount that someone can get from short-term disability. So the plan designs really were forced to change because of that, because in that instance, then no one's going to enroll in something that they're not really going to get much of a benefit from. So again, we went out for proposals. We received proposals from MetLife, the Hartford and Madison National. Again, the county's health insurance committee met and discussed the proposals that we received for short-term. Uh, and again, the county's uh, insurance committee recommended moving forward with MetLife. And that is based on the fact that there is a premium reduction, the rates that we are seeing were less than the other um, companies. Part of that is because they pretty much have to, they're forced to at this point, reduce those rates, because the amount of um, benefit isn't going to be the same. Uh, they also proposed increasing the plan design from sixty percent benefit coverage to seventy percent uh, coverage, and they offered a two-year rate guarantee. And they reduced the waiting period for receiving benefits from fifteen days to seven days after an accident or illness. So currently, when someone is going out, they have fifteen-day waiting period after an accident or illness before a short-term kicks in. And that reduced to seven days to align with paid fam. And going with MetLife for short, short-term disability, there is a huge advantage there, because then you have the same company, the same claims people that are looking at the same person and um, administering both of those benefits uh, together, which is extremely helpful uh, on the administrative side. Uh, the other companies that we compared did not offer the same uh, rate reductions. So that is why we are proposing to move to MetLife for short-term disability.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve MetLife as the county's short-term disability carrier for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Art. Discussion?
Pretty straightforward to me.
Seems like a no-brainer. Yep.
Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Want to put the needed, or maybe you don't have the needed motion to go into close session up on the screen?
Can we take five minutes first?
Yeah, we'll.
I, I would suggest that we take that five minutes in our trip down to close session.
Okay. Oh, we're going downstairs?
So we need someone to make a motion with those, with that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the such, session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero three, labor negotiation strategy.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Art. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we.
Okay, we are good to go.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just have one quick item for my report today, and that is, uh, we are gonna have a work session next week. It's gonna be a very long one. Expect a full day, because we're going through the appropriation requests.
Oh, okay.
So we have.
That's why we got the red book?
Yes.
I will also not be here.
Yes, I know. So we have all of them scheduled.
They're all coming to present?
They are all coming to present. We have one that's gonna participate remotely, uh, but otherwise, the rest of them will all be here, start at eight-thirty. We have a break built in at about ten o'clock. We have a break for lunch, and we should be done three, three-thirty.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a plan for lunch?
Oh, that's right, Humane Society is not coming as well, but.
Because we just did that contract.
Yes, because we have a contract with them, so.
Um, he needs lunch, he's asking.
We'll, we'll figure out a plan for lunch, so.
I'll probably be in the Smokies, I'll eat something for you at lunch.
All right, so that was his report. Um, would we like to suspend the uh, committee updates today? I have only one.
I have very little, so we probably can.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, on the last note then, Cory sent us a list for the employee picnic. Um, are you getting all, all of the things in the bottom you're getting, you're taking care of? Okay.
And I'll do the usual order that I order.
You do the Patty's hot dogs?
The burgers and the hot dogs, yeah.
Buns.
Buns. And is Brandy getting the chips?
She hasn't. You are, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so we need four cases of water?
Um, yeah, and I can pick that up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wonder if the hospital's still got water.
And just as a reminder, um, especially for the folks that might be listening, this is uh, uh, employee appreciation that the commissioners uh, pay for to thank the employees for making our job a little easier.
And what's the date of this again?
Twenty-seven?
August twenty-seventh.
Oh, county cook up.
And so will you let us know what our portion is or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Beth will let you know what it is for the stuff she orders, and I'll let you know what it is for the stuff I pick up and then.
Okay. And then if there's anything in addition that you need, then just.
Yeah, and if you pay the same day you're notified, you get a ten percent discount.
Wonderful. She just added ten percent to all of the bills.
Don't.
He's, he's trying to get at me, there's no ten percent discount.
I would add, add ten percent to the, each person's total. And then if they don't, if yes, then.
It feels like it's on sale, but it's probably not.
All right, is, with that, is there any other business to come before the board today? Hearing none, we will adjourn at ten fifty-five.
All right. And so back down to that.
Then we have, then we have suicide.
I know.
But Brandy's furnishing the lunch for me.
The camera's off, right? Because I just went.
So.
Yeah, it's off. You're good.
First, they gotta, they gotta select the jury, so she's tied up today and maybe tomorrow.
Oh, he didn't, uh, Andrew? Can we off the record? Yes.
I used to hate roundabouts.
I hate them.